I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 25, 2018 regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. At this time, I'd like to inter— They can't hear me?
No.
Can't hear me? Is that better? Can you hear me now? Okay. Anyway, welcome to the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. At this time, I'd like to invite Reed Barbie to come up and give our invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we just gathered this evening, and we pray, Father, for the ladies and gentlemen in this tremendous position that they hold. Pray, Father, that they're guided by your wisdom. The decisions they make, Father, will be good for this area. Father, just direct them, and we just give you praise for the opportunity together and to speak the things that need to be spoken, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Crowe, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Crowe?
Here.
Alvedras?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Hawkins?
Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mrs... Mr. Livinggood's puny tonight, and Ms. Hawkins has got kid duty tonight.
Yeah.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number four is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Johnson?
The report you have is actually for December, not November, as it says on there. We did our—On the Bricks television show was also one of the business meetings once again, so we're still carrying those. Cash mob was to the Golden Crown. December is my hardest month to get anybody to go to anything, and such was the case there. Our lunch mob went to Urban Brew. Did the Lions Club program, and got an award there, by the way.
Yeah.
I think the mayor did, too. Not at the same one, but I think you got an award from the Lions Club, too. We must be pretty special, or they just don't know much. I don't know which it is.
Get me on the bottom of the barrel, and I'll give them anybody.
And our Transformers helped with the Christmas basket program. And Christine Scott is our December volunteer, and she is the leader of the Transformers now, and she does a wonderful job of it. We had 131 hours and 42 volunteers in December. The Christmas—I don't know if you guys were part of the Christmas downtown, but the gallery has one part. The shop and dine combined with it this year, and then the chambers, Christmas tree lighting, and it was all in one evening, and I think it really went better having everything one evening. Most of the retailers were pretty happy. The main thing that I have to announce is that Guyman is going to host the Main Street training in August. It's going to be, I believe, August 7th through the 9th, and so we'll have 30 to 40 Main Streeters from across the state come here, and it'll be fun.
Wow.
A lot of good bed nights, and we get to show off our town. And sorry I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I went on vacation. And I didn't miss you guys at all. Oh, well. Do you have any questions? I know, I mean, I was just having way too much fun.
You're being honest.
I know. I can't help it.
Any questions? Thank you.
No? Well, thank you, guys. Bye-bye.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of interlocal contract for purchasing with HGAC by for E-911. Chief?
Counsel, this—the 911 board is looking at acquiring a new 911 system for the county, and this HGAC buy is much like GSA—it's a government site for governments to municipal, county, state, to be able to purchase things that have already went through a formal bidding process and a review, and this requires a year interlocal agreement to participate in this system. Part of the stuff that I believe is in your packet is a list of Oklahoma municipalities and counties that have already participated and purchased things through this program.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal contract for purchasing with HGAC by for 911, E-911, item five.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crowe?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Discussion—you're next, aren't you? Discussion, possible action on approval of invoice R.207—2017-7021 to Information Technologies for Annual Software Subscription for Police Department.
This is our annual software subscription maintenance agreement with Information Technologies. It provides our records management system, our computer-aided dispatch, our software for our mobile computers. For—it's a yearly service fee to them. We've had ITI, I believe, since 2000.
Are they pretty well-known in the area? Do they do a lot of business with other police stations in the area?
They have clients in Oklahoma, Colorado, Arkansas.
So they're just not Oklahoma?
Yes.
They're national?
Yes.
So you're satisfied with them?
Oh, yes. Very much.
Any questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve invoice R.207—R.2017-721 for Information Technologies, item six.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Agenda item number seven, discussion, possible action on approval of IBTS contract for 2018. I believe this time, Mr. Howdy, do you want to give us an update?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good to see you all again. In your packet or electronically, as well as a handout, was some information. First of all, was a response to a letter from Mayor Peterson on behalf of the city council dated November 1st regarding an evaluation and review of the IBTS services. I had communicated to the mayor during that interim period that we would be doing some research in order to properly and accurately answer the questions that were posed. We have completed that, and if I may, there are some attachments as well that were requested in the letter, and if I may, just very quickly run through some of the highlights. One of the areas—and I'll get into some of the specifics—they were four specific areas, but we believe that our partnership has increased responsiveness to the Guyman citizens and businesses, has increased workplace efficiencies. We have developed and trained employees and advanced them and empowered them to do their jobs in the field without a lot of bureaucracy. We've implemented a number of technology solutions that you are aware of that have produced more efficient operations, and we've implemented the first proactive safety program and actually affected a reduction in insurance premiums for this coming year. In the area of cost of services, and one of the attachments right behind here is called a—is labeled a—it's kind of a chart labeled Budget Value Overview. And what we tried to point out, and I'll review that with you, is we read in the 2016 audit report, we read in the Performator, it's presented to you in public, that IBTS fund balances and cost overruns and so on have been a result of outsourcing IBTS services. We do not believe that. We believe the financial report will support our contention, and we have done the research to present some of that to you. There have definitely been some cost increases, and we're going to point those out specifically. The number of factors made the difference between 2015 and 16. First of all, 2015 was—I mean, yes, was a 12-year period. 2016 was a 10-year period, and a number of other things occurred. For example, the gas system saw a reduction in revenues of $240,000 in 2016. There are notes in the audited financial statements that transfers from the GUA to the City General Fund and special funds were in excess of normal transfers. There was a special item cost of $537,000 on page nine of the audit report that was charged to the GUA, and a decrease in the interfund balance in the GUA fund of $1.3 million identified on page seven and eight of the audit report. So we believe that a number of factors other than just IBTS service expenses caused that increase in service in 2016 over 2015, and we felt it important to point that out. I might also add that the auditors or the financial advisor to the city has yet, in the two and a half year—or two years we've been here—to speak to us, our program director or me, or anyone in charge of some of our finances at all about any questions, any clarification, could we help understand something. So that there's a disconnect that we just thought was important to bring to your attention. We were consistently encouraged by the staff and the city council in entering into our agreement with the city of Guyman that price was not the only consideration. You gentlemen showed great vision and great courage in entering into this contract, and you knew in the very beginning that there was almost a million dollars of upfront technology, infrastructure, and other improvements that we were proposing that you approved in the original budget. Those costs have been spread also, which is part of that difference. And I remember a very bold statement that we're about to approve almost a million dollars of improvements, but we believe our community deserves it, and we believe our community is worth it. And so that's part of the reason, and we've identified what those improvements are. And Mayor, in your letter, you actually acknowledged a number of those, and we believe those have done the same things to move us toward—move Guyman toward an all-American city. And in terms of performance measures, we've developed, drafted, and submitted to the interim city manager not a final copy, but a review that we're working on, a draft, to continue that work and finalize those performance measures. A great deal of performance metrics are contained in the reports that you get out of the lucidity work order system because it measures what was the response time from a call from Mrs. Jones about a problem and getting that problem resolved. Well, those are metrics. That's how you measure how well we're performing or not performing. So you're getting a form of those, but we want an easier template that is easier to understand, is not a thick volume of data that you have to go through to determine that. Community engagement, absolutely, and we commented last time, we can do a better role and continue to focus on getting the job done, delivering the services, but engaging more actively in the community. Creating a culture of inclusion in the community with the citizens, businesses, receiving input and evaluation, and doing a number of things—surveys, interviews, and other meetings—to receive that feedback and input on just how are the services? How are we doing? What are we not doing that we should be doing? And so on. Attached is the 2016 cost analysis and the 2017. It has a complete breakdown by item. Both of those—you'll need your glasses, I'm sorry, but it's a very—very—you have it electronically, so you can increase the print size, but it shows every dime that was spent that actually matches the expense, and the sheet just prior to that—or that as it relates to the budget—the sheet just prior to that, you'll see the first column is original city budgets, and the 2015 audited city budget was $8,440,000, but the city itself only spent 7.28 million. In 2016, it was a 10-month contract, so two months of the expenditures in the $7,160 that you see there were made by—not in the $7,160, but in the original budget were city expenditures for those first two months because we started in March. So you had two months of city expense that we weren't in any ability to control or regulate. You follow that line down. There is the resulting savings of right at a million dollars, which were shared with the city of Guyman, $500,000 rebate, as well as $125,000 donation for two police cars. The following column—or the following cell there that goes all the way across, those are the savings that you realized by switching from—by freezing the pension plan and by switching to IBTS. $213,000 in that year were savings back to the city for workers' comp. Your liability—for pension, your future pension liability because you froze the plan, based on your actuarial study—and I've got a copy of it here from the OKMRF, Actuarial Study, relieved you of $1.172 million of future cash requirements for pensions. In addition, annually, it saved you $302,701 in fees, and that happens year after year after year. So if, in fact, the switch had not occurred from the city to IBTS partnership and services, those costs would be added in to the city cost and would far exceed the cost of IBTS providing the services. And you look at the third column of 2017, a full 12 months. There was $947,000—I alluded to it a little bit early, then in the very beginning, we identified. I remember, Sergio, you scrutinized, do we really need those servers? Do we really need those switches and equipment? And—because you've got a background in that. And the result was, yes, this steps us up to the next level and gives us a call center. It gives us a lot of data, a lot of technology about our infrastructure and citizen responsiveness and tracking work orders, and that's part of that expenditure. That was fully expensed in 2017, that one-time—part of those one-time expenses for that—those improvements. So that's why the significant jump between $7,160 in the 10 months of 2016—and, excuse me, $9,198. Now, in 2017, our budget went from $9.9 million in 2016 to $9.3 million. We only spent—and the budget was $8,159 prorated for 10 months, and that's what that number is—we only spent this year $9,198, and yet, our beloved city manager, in doing what he has to do from a financial management standpoint, worked with us to get our budget down even further for next year to $8.946 million. So we're a little concerned, having actually documented expenditures, and it's in your package there of nine-point—roughly $9.2 million—that we've got to live—we'll live with $8.9 million. We'll figure it out, and we'll make it happen, and hopefully, we'll even have some savings there because we plan to do some additional things to help make that happen. Are there any questions at this point? I'm almost done.
If you can finish, I got some at the end.
Okay. So again, these next two sheets show you the detailed line item expenditures, shows the budget and the expenditures relative to the total budget, and for 2016 and 2017, the next-to-last sheet is for your information. I verbally reported this back in November, just kind of a list of value adds that our partnership has created with the city, and then I've just kind of, what's next? What have you done for me lately? And that's what you should be asking, and what's next on the agenda for planned innovations and activities for 2018, and we've listed those. I've added one that wasn't on here, and that's ordinate and code reviews and rewrites that we want to get engaged in in 2018. And finally, just as an example, this year, there were increases in electricity costs and other utilities. Those increases in 2017 produced a $328,000 overrun on our budget. Now, if we were a city, if I were a department head, one of the chiefs, a department head, I would be coming to the manager and council and say, hey, that increase just killed my budget. I can't pay the light bill anymore. It's $328,000 over. IBTS didn't say a word. We paid the bills right on. We found a way from other savings in our line item budget to shift and move around. We never bothered you with trying to get an additional appropriation. That's what partners do. That's not what cities typically do. So we're finding these types of things that we truly believe are benefiting the citizens of Guyman, and I hope you'll favorably consider renewal of our contract for year three. And as soon as the questions are done, I'd like to just introduce a couple of people, Mayor, that are here tonight.
Okay. Mr. How, you mentioned that nobody from the city asked for financial statements to get with the finance people at IBTS.
No, that wasn't from the city. It was from our auditors.
Correct, but he mentioned that nobody from the city had gotten with IBTS or requested information, and I know we requested information for the last part of 2017. We kept asking and asking, and the city manager was actually asking for those documents, and finally, he got them, so.
Right, and Mr. Alvedras, I did not mean any of the city staff, Crawford and Associates, nor Finley and Cook, before concluding that it was our service agreement that caused overruns and fund deficits. They never consulted with us. They never shared those conclusions with us or any specifics about it. That's what I meant. To your point, in 2016, we were converting to the Tyler ENCODE system, which the city currently uses.
Right, but we were asking for financial budget documents on a per-department basis.
Yes, sir, and this is an excuse. Through that conversion, it was very difficult for us to take what city—for example, you know this—that there are line items in your city budget that aren't in ours, but then there are other line items that are in ours. You pay for fuel. You pay for salt. You pay for direct gas purchases. You pay for asphalt. So it was very difficult in setting up our ENCODE system to differentiate between the two systems. So it just took a lot longer. We got to the point that we were close to severing the relationship with Tyler ENCODE. So it was very frustrating for us, and I apologize for that.
I don't like comparing cities. Guyman is unique. Elk City is unique. Everybody's unique. Everybody has their obstacles. Since we entered into partnership, has IBTS taken on a project like—for the size, the scope that Guyman's at, have they gone in and taken a challenge like a municipality and all the departments that it's been? Has IBTS done that since?
Have we duplicated what we've done here?
Correct.
No. We're not. We're doing one another project in central Louisiana, same type of services.
Okay.
But since we entered into this agreement, we've been working with some other Oklahoma municipalities. I'd love to say we're close. Maybe we are, but I'm not going to say we are until we're there.
And you stated it's a partnership, so in partnership, sometimes there's disagreements, agreements. Do you see a reason why Guyman would not be able to take control, take back some more departments in order to reduce the total cost that it incurs on the city in a partnership where you want to see both sides succeed?
Yeah. I do see a couple of reasons. One is there's a magnitude, an order of magnitude at which we can be very efficient. We can achieve economies of scale that we may not if it's a smaller project, and we do smaller projects in other areas where we're not doing the whole services, and the pricing has to be significantly different. Secondly, for example, we relinquished the municipal court services this year. Yet, we'll pay the light bill, we'll pay the power bill in there, we'll clean the municipal court, we'll help them with IT, any IT issues, any HR issues, whatever that support requires, but we will receive no compensation for it whatsoever. If you were to, for example, take over a facility, a building, a library, well, then you'll be hiring your own electricians, mechanics, plumbers, roofing people, maintenance custodians, and will it be a full-time position for them? There's just a lot of economy of scale that you will still have to rely on some third-party services—
Understood.
—to manage a facility.
Right.
And I think the real question is—and having been a city manager, what I've found out is there's never been an apples-to-apples comparison. Well, the city can do it for this, and you're charging me that, because cities typically don't take into account that gentleman's cost, that gentleman's cost, the building, the overhead, where a private or a public nonprofit organization counts every penny they have to. And so you always lose something, and the city says, we're saving money, and when you really get into their financials, oh, they didn't count the time of the attorney or the HR people or whatever. So that—and I'd be happy to explore that with you further, but to answer your question in a partnership, if you say, we'd like to whittle this off, we'll sit down and talk with you about that. We'll try to talk you out of it, but we're not going to take our ball and go home.
Good to hear. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I've got a question. How is the best way for the citizens, if they have a complaint about something that IBTS has done, or they think IBTS has done, to address that? I mean, is there a—can they send an email to corporate headquarters? Would that do any good?
They certainly can. They can send an email to the call center here.
Okay.
If they're okay with it, they can call the call center. It doesn't have to be to say, there's limbs down in my street, please come pick them up. It can be, hey, I've got some concern about the way the planning commission went last week, or whatever there might be a concern of, and that's—we actually prefer that they go that route because then it's recorded, it's documented, and if that issue isn't resolved, it's going to stay in that system, and it's going to keep reminding the next level of supervision it has not been responded to. And that's really the best way to make certain that there's not the black hole. We all remember the days of the pink slips, while you were out. Well, that was a great tracking system, and this is just so far ahead of that to ensure that it doesn't fall through the black.
So they follow the chain of command first, but if that fails, they can direct an email somewhere north.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And certainly, the last resort would be to the city manager, who's got my day phone, night phone, weekend phone, everything.
Because I think it does go back to the communication aspect that, you know, I don't care what corporation, company, city, whatever, it always comes back to seem like communication or lack of.
It is, and oftentimes, this little things, but when they're unattended to, they become big things, and they generate animosity that's really not necessary.
Would there be some way to put, like, a utility bill that if you have a problem and you're not satisfied with the remedy, to please call our call center and leave a voicemail?
Absolutely.
I think that would—I think that's one approach that would be helpful.
And, you know, we've talked about the weekly newsletter or the monthly newsletter and making sure that people know how to access that, whether it's on the website or whether it's an email blast, send us your email, and we'll send that out. One of the things on here is a mobile app that we want to launch in 2018, that someone's in their car, and they see a pothole, or they see something that needs to be reported. They're able to do it with their telephone, not have to wait till they get to a landline or anything else. So there's a lot of those things that we want to do to engage and reengage the citizenry. We've got a stack of statistics this high, building permits, each type of building permit, where they are, what the inspections were, how many planning cases, how many zoning cases, on and on and on, that are going to be compiled in a glossy annual report that will be submitted to you, that will be made available online and on the website, and getting the message out that the community is—that it's available for the community.
And that's a big step forward.
Pardon?
That's a big step forward.
It really is.
Yes.
It really is, and it will be done annually, to just say, hey, what did we do? What did we miss? How did we do? What can we do better? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Do you know when that might be issued?
February 8th was the last—was the target date?
It'd be a perfect target date.
It would, but I'm a little bit skeptical about the— But, but I'm a little bit skeptical about the review and the copy, getting it.
Editing.
Corrected, edited, and, and backprinted and out. So if it's the week, meeting after that, don't, don't yell at me.
Too loud.
Right. May I introduce?
You bet.
We have, we have three folks with us that are, that are very integral to local government solutions and that, that assist and support the Guyman Project. First is Diane Beneki. Diane is the chief operating officer of IBTS and of IBTS CS. He's kind of a big shot, so please be nice. He's my boss. But he is a nice guy. Diane came from a long executive career, both nationally and globally, with International Business Machines, and we're very fortunate to, to get him on our team. Theron Wendell. Theron? Theron is the deputy director of operations for local government solutions. Theron is a detailed guy for operations. He looks in and says, why is so-and-so charging Guyman this on the phone bill? And he fights until he gets it taken off, or any kind of issue like that. He's, he's found that we're doing a lot of things that we don't tend, the little things to look at, that he's bringing to the surface, as well as providing a lot of guidance to our branch offices and our other projects. Theron came to us from Booze Allen Consulting, and also from Hewlett Packard. And then Matt Horn is the deputy director for program development and innovation. Matt is, has been a city manager for the past 15 years. He also, I actually met him while working for CH2M Hill in new city startups in Georgia. And he was the director of operations for Sandy Springs, Georgia. And he's been the manager of Geneva, New York for the past 10 years. So he's been on the private sector and the public sector side of this process, and we're real excited to have Matt. So thank you for the time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howey.
I would like to make the motion that we table the rest of the agenda item number seven, due to, the city attorney is continuing to look over the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on approval of the Texas County E-911 Coordinator Agreement. You're the only one here, I think, chief.
Your other chief left you.
You came dressed in that pretty purple shirt. We didn't want to see it.
That's the color of the day.
This is color of the day, right there. Yeah.
This, this agreement that's before you for approval is the, the 911 Coordinator Agreement of the 911 Board, City of Guyman, Texas County, that coordinate through the 911 Board, through OITA, on basically a contract amount for X amount a year. And in turn, OITA provides a person that takes care of the coordinator services for us, and that encompasses mapping, GPS. He comes out when the system goes down and gets on the phone with all the people and gets it back up and running and.
Just to continue, we've had this contract place for several years.
We've had this since, I believe, 2013, 2012, something like that.
Twelve or thirteen.
Ten or eleven.
Excuse me?
Ten or eleven.
Yeah.
A little lower than I thought.
Any, any questions? Discussion? Motion?
Make the motion that we approve Texas County E-911 Coordinator Agreement.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on approval to go out for assistance to firefighters grant. Chief, let's bet.
Here he is. The other one's here, too. The good-looking one's here. So this is just a, a grant that they give every year. It's $310 million that the federal government gives.
We get that much?
Do what?
We get that much?
We get all that, yeah. I wish. I would spend it all. No, so it's 310 million that they give out. They've, they've done this for the past 15 years. They were going to cancel it this year, but they came through and they funded it for the next 10 years, I think. But this is just approval to go out for that grant. It's actually, there's three different phases that you can apply for. There's a firefighter, there's a vehicle acquisition, there's firefighter safety and operations grant, and then there's a regional grant. I, I don't feel it's the time to apply for a regional grant. I can't get anybody to really go in with me and say that it's a good thing, so the things that are on the regional, I don't think that are necessary here. So we're going to go for a tanker, which is about $330,000. The city's match would be 5% of that. And we're going out for cardiac monitors, which they're about six or seven years old. None of us have six or seven-year-old laptops, and these are supposed to be reading hearts and doing whatever they're supposed to do. And they're expensive. They're, five of them are about $250,000, so again, 5% match. So hopefully, we get one of them. I, I would doubt highly that we get both of them, but hopefully, we get one.
Chief, can you prioritize those two? Can you say, this is our preference? You just have to submit both?
You submit them both, and, and the, the peer reviewers, they go through, they read them all, they decide which is, which communities need the most. And we actually, we're, we're paying somebody to write the grant. We weren't successful for like, six years in a row, and I think it's all due to, we don't know the language that needs to be written. So they're doing it for 750 bucks. If we don't get it next year, they'll do it for 50 bucks. So everything will be done, and hopefully, in two years, we'll get at least one. So they, this group has about a 75% success rate, so they know the right words to put in.
And we've, and we've used them before and been successful, haven't we?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Any other questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve to go out for the assistance. Do you need some?
No, I was just thanking him for being here.
For the assistance to firefighters grant, item nine.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to appoint a member to the Board of Adjustments Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy, the vacancy left by Jaime Gonzalez. An application is attached from Mr. Kyle Hawkins. We've visited with him about that, and he has submitted an application, and I would submit his name for consideration. And Mr. Hawkins is here today.
Did we have any other applications, or is this the only one we had? Okay. As far as I know.
I'll make a motion we appoint Kyle Hawkins to the Board of Adjustment Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy list by Jaime Gonzalez. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you, Kyle, for volunteering to serve. Agenda item number 11 is to accept the resignation of our part-time city treasurer, Sally Hawkins. She's just recently been elevated in status. Is that the word I should use, Kyle? Are you not going to say? Anyway, Sally's been just recently named the, the new, the new president of the Bank of Panhandle, and with that added responsibility, she elected that she needed to tender her resignation.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the resignation of Sally Hawkins as part-time treasurer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye, with regrets.
Swager.
Me, too. Aye.
Alvedres.
Ditto. Aye.
Peterson.
With regrets. Aye. Sally's done a great job, and she's, she's going to continue to be a good supporter for the city and our service.
We're gonna, we're gonna miss her at staff. Your final report from Sally has been handed out to each of you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 12 is a possible executive session, percent of 25 Oklahoma statutes, section 307B3, to discuss appraisal of City of Guyman real property located in Block 20 of the Nance addition, discussion of purchase of a one-acre tract of real property and improvements in Block 8, park place addition by lease purchase.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
We'll be back.
I make a motion. Can we reconvene?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
New item number 13 is discussion and possible action on approval of a real estate purchase and exchange agreement between the City of Guyman and BRCH Holdings Incorporated by exchange of City of Guyman real property in Block 20.
Can't hear you.
Oh. I'm sorry. Okay, you want me to start over? I will.
Sure.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action on approval of a real estate purchase and exchange agreement between the City of Guyman and BRCH Holdings Incorporated by exchange of City of Guyman real property in Block 20 of the Nance addition for lease purchase of a one-acre tract and improvements in Block 8, park place addition to the City of Guyman.
I make a motion for the approval of real estate purchase and exchange agreement between the City of Guyman and BRCH Holdings, Inc., by exchange of City of Guyman real property in Block 20, Nance addition, item 13.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion concerning utility deposit for landlords and rental, rental property.
I had this put on the agenda because I just, I have a hard time with citizens that have lived here for, well, most of their life, and they have a renter that moves out, and they decide to keep the utilities on. So they want to put the rental house back into their name, and they have to come down here and give a $200 deposit, even though their bills have been paid on time for 20 or 30 years or whatever. And I just don't think that is being fair to our, our citizens. And, you know, if they show that they, their track record shows that they've paid their bills on time, and I just, and that if they rent it again, the renters are going to have to come down and make a deposit. And I, I just would like to see something changed on that, on that $200 fee. I agree with him. I think that it's just causing a lot of problems when they do have to bounce back and forth like that. And a lot of these people, you know, like you said, they've been here 25, 30, 40 years. And.
I understand that point, transferring from a renter to the owner if the utilities are left on. But what about the case where the utilities are turned off, and then someone wants the utilities to be turned back on so they can do an inspection? That's a little different situation.
That is a little bit different situation. Could we address that as maybe a lower fee, if that's all they want is an inspection?
I think we could do that.
And that way, that, you know, I just think $200 is excessive for people that have paid their bills on time and are just, you know, trying to keep, like, water and heat in their renting unit until it does get rented again.
Well, the original intent of that was obviously to pay an unpaid, you know, to cover an unpaid utility bill when a tenant moves out or someone moves out.
Right.
So in the case where the owner takes the responsibility for that utility account, then I think that, you know, a simple transfer could be done for a nominal fee. And I don't know what an appropriate fee might be for turning utilities back on for inspections and that sort of thing.
Could we check into that and give an idea?
We certainly will.
And, you know, I just, you know, we all work for the citizens of this community, and we need to try to keep them happy.
Right. The only concern would be the unpaid utility bill, and if we address that issue, then I think the rest of it can be worked out.
Okay. I appreciate it.
All right. Sure.
Anything else on number 14? Agenda item number 15 is discussion and meeting places for boards and commissions. Mr. Crowe?
I attended a board meeting up here a few days ago, and it was at noon. Don't remember what day. But anyway, a lot of the board members brought in meals and were trying to eat, but they were having problems hearing from one end to the other. These are all volunteer people. We have these public boards that are not compensated. I know we've discussed this the last two years, and I feel like that these boards should be allowed to meet wherever they would like to meet. They discussed in their board meeting the other day that they didn't mind paying for their own meals. They didn't expect us to pay for the meal, but they would like to meet someplace where they could order and eat. And I think that that needs to be really addressed, and, and let them meet where the heck they want to meet.
Well, I had, I had people from that board that came, I saw them the next day, and as I told them, my, my take when we just had to, when we, when we built this building, when we moved in, we did the space factor. And what I, my, my thought on, on the boards and commissions was not, this dais is kind of for planning and zoning and the people that are acting on, kind of judicial, whatever. But my, my, my thought had been that we've got the area out there, those chairs can be moved, we can set, set up tables around where they can do that. And that's why we bought the wireless mics, is we can set the mics on the table where they can hear each other. And, you know, most places, most towns, most churches, most, everybody has their boards and commission meetings in the building that belongs to that part of the, whatever that entity is. But I would, I would like to see us work towards, try and make sure our staff is aware that we set up, try the table deal, set the microphones up so they can hear and hear each other, see how that works for a few more board meetings, and then go from there.
One of the comments that was made in the last discussion of this, when we, when we last decided that they should meet here, was that it was a inconvenience for the city employees to have to go to a restaurant, to leave here, take their, their papers and their books and all of that sort of thing, and go to a restaurant. If that's an inconvenience, coming up here and setting up tables and chairs is going to be a, I don't know what you call that.
I, I think the, the comment about the inconvenience was when the city was paying for the meals, and so the staff member had to go out and make sure that there was enough people to have a corn before the meals were ordered, and, and taking care of the ticket after the, everyone ordered their meal and that sort of thing. It was the, but if you're, you're not paying for the meals, then that solves part of the problem.
You know, the airport board meets out at the airport at 7:00 in the morning, I believe. Is there anybody that's in here at 7:00? Does this place open at 7:00?
No, and I don't think, there's only one person that goes out to take minutes for that.
Well, but they want to meet at the restaurant instead of the airport. How about that?
That's up to the council.
Could we get possibly the chairman of each board to get an input from them?
Part of, part of the issue you have here now, that we've posted all the meeting places and their times as a requirement.
Every other meeting's going to have to be a special.
Every other meeting will have to be a special meeting if they change.
And that's what I brought up when we first decided this.
Yeah, we went through this, same thing last year.
Well, I just think, you know, all of our people have seen this pretty building and all this, and, and they are volunteers on the board.
So what are you? And I'm sorry, I just think that we ought to allow them to meet where they want to meet.
What are you requesting, Mr. Crowe?
Well, I requested discussion and possible action, but I got discussion, so we're just discussing. And what I am requesting is that it's come up on the agenda sometime that, where we can take action and allow them to meet where they want to meet. And if they want to come up and, you know, speak to us, hey, great.
Mr. Quimby.
Mayor, I'm here for that discussion. I don't know what this is, if I'm, or if I'm supposed to write it, or if I...
Did you ask him to come up? That smell your fine?
Yeah, come on up.
You know, I happen to be on that board that Chet's referring to last week. There's another lady here that's on the board with me. There's several people that, of different age groups on the boards. Several of them are working people, that they have strict lunch hours. All these meetings always take about an hour, every one of them. A lot of people don't have time to go take off, they can't take off, and leave 15 minutes early to go get a sack lunch, or leave, leave and, after the meeting and go back by, because they're dependent on getting back. I don't think there's a one of you sitting here that can tell me that if your employee didn't show up for 15 or 20 minutes, you'd be a little aggravated because he didn't show up, because he had to go stop and buy lunch and didn't have it available. You know, we're all talking about, not only is our committee 100% behind having this at a place where we can have lunch, I've talked to the airport board, they want to be able to have a meal, I've talked to convention and tourism, it's 100% unanimous that these people want a place where they can have lunch, or breakfast in the case of the airport. And I think it's totally inconsiderate that none of this was ever mentioned before you guys set this calendar up to anybody. We're 100%, you know, we don't care that the city can't afford to buy our meals, if that's what the issue is. We're volunteers, we've always been volunteers. It's like I told them the other day, I eat every day. And if I have to buy my own meal, I'm going to buy it because I'm a volunteer. I don't expect to be paid or reimbursed for this stuff. I do it as a public service. And that's a unanimous decision across the board with everyone. But, you know, we're all here to pay sales tax, that's what we're all griping about. And if we're not paying sales tax and we go buy our lunch because we can't, we can't get that opportunity, we're just cheating ourselves, guys. Think about that. Every one of these commissions wants to eat where they can have lunch available. We're not asking you to buy one meal for anybody. All we want to do is you say, "Thank you for serving and appreciate you coming." Every one of us. Because we've done this, you know, several people's been on these boards for lots of years. And, and we're not here to ask for a meal. We're here to continue to serve, if that's what you want us to do. But we want the place where we can have a meal.
Well, if I might...
Sure.
We've, part of the side, setting the tables up, doing it down where you could do it, I've said all along that if we need to bring in sandwiches, if we need to bring in pizza, I don't have any problem with that and feed everybody, because you are giving up your time. My whole thing has been, we've got to the point with restaurants where we, the restaurants are, you call and you reserve a room, and then we cancel meetings, and, you know, maybe they could have rented that room. I don't know. To me, it's inconsequential. I don't carry that much either way. It's just that we have the building and the facilities. If there's a question during the meeting of any, anything that's inside this building, it's available, as far as paperwork. But, you know, if we, if that's the consensus of everybody wants to do the other, I'm fine.
I mean, I know you can't vote on it tonight, but I intend to be on the agenda for the next meeting, and if I need to, I'll bring every member of every committee here. But I would like to, out of your graciousness, not to even have to come and put it on the meeting, I hope you would put it on the agenda yourself.
It'll be on the agenda next week.
Okay.
It will be.
Well, thank you, but we think it'd be really considerate to let us have a meeting where we can have lunch and get the people to do their business during the lunch hour and not have to worry about some employer having your spouse bring you lunch because you couldn't go get one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quimby.
Anything else, Mr. Crowe?
No, that's got me.
Okay.
It'll be on the next agenda then?
It will be.
I'd like to see it on the next agenda, please.
It will be.
I'd like to have it.
Agenda Item Number 16 is Reports and Comments from City Manager and Council Members.
The only comment I have tonight is that we have an election coming up on February 13th. We have done some public information. We have a flyer out in the lobby, gives you some information on that election. And I think we would just encourage everyone to get out and cast your vote. I think it's an important issue for the city and hope people take their opportunity to cast their vote and let us know how they feel about that issue.
Okay.
I don't have anything right now.
I'm fine. Fine? Mr. Crowe, you're passing? Well, I want to, I want to, I think everybody in town's noticed it, but our city crews have been cleaning up some drainage ditches on the north part of town, getting rid of trees and trash, so that when it rains, here, that 40-day and 40-night rain that'll probably come, we won't have drainage issues, and it also makes the town look so much better. And, you know, I've, everybody I know right now is, not everybody, but a lot of folks are aware of the new legislative sessions, getting ready to start downstate. A lot of people don't realize, these are some numbers I got from Legislative Committee update last month. There are about 1,900 bills being carried over in the House and Senate in the state of Oklahoma. Right now, they've filed an additional, about 2,000 bills to look at, and they're still in special session over the budget. So, just little point of information, a lot of the recommendations from our legislative people that affect municipalities, they haven't read all the bills yet and be forthcoming with that. So, I thought that'd be, was just a little trinket of knowledge and information. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 17, Public Comments and Announcements. Reading Public Comments and Announcements. Not, well, whoa, yes, I'm sorry.
Public comments.
Oh, Casey, I didn't see you that quick. I was...
I'll make it short and sweet. I've worked in building material business for over 30 years now. I've seen a lot of building inspectors come through that have worked with our community and promoted building in our community. I'd like to see that we could get back to that spot, to where we need housing. And I'd like to see whether there's a change in IBTS or what it might happen, but that we can promote building and work with our builders and our contractors in this community so we can get building to happen in a cooperative state. Simple enough?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Boring?
Just want to add it up.
Put your time, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, Council, my name's Austin Boring. Kind of touching on what Ms. Rochoff had to say, one of the things I've been brainstorming that, I know we have a budget crunch, but, you know, I think to help promote growth in the city, one thing we should consider maybe is waiving building permit fees for new construction, say over 25,000 or something like that, to promote new builders to come in here so they don't have the hassle of all these fees and dealing with it. Still have the inspections and all that, but maybe consider that promotion of getting more people in here and doing things and waiving those fees, because it does benefit. I mean, what do those fees mean whenever we have people come in here building and new construction and stuff like that, because they're going to be adding to property taxes, sales tax, so on and so forth? So, just an idea to throw out there, because that helps Mr. Rochoff with his business and helps other people also. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boring.
Any other public comments or announcements? Any new business? Any new business? Will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council? Will readjourn as the Guyman Utilities Authority?
Reconvene.
Reconvene, that's right, I'm sorry. Here, slap my hand, slap my hand, go on, slap it. Reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've done items, Agenda Items Two and Three. Any public comments and announcements? Agenda Item Number Five is Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution Number 18-02, Resolution Setting Utility Rates, Solid Waste Disposal Charges, Fees and Deposits, and Establishing Procedures for Utility Connections, Disconnections, and Reconnections.
Yes, this is a resolution that replaces one you approved at the last council meeting. We had a couple of errors that we discovered, and we had a rounding up problem. So, the rates that you have in the resolution in tonight's packet are the correct ones. So, we'd ask you to approve the correct rates for water and sewer.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1802, Setting Utility Rates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Any new business?